Form me in and pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I need a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Keeling, make some motion. Mr. Quinn, second it. All those in favor. Six oh Megan. Citizens' participation statements?
Thank you, Mr. President. We had no request for participation this evening.
Item number four, written communications.
We had no written communications either.
And number five, military liaison update. Mr. Bardell.
Mr. President and board members, on behalf of the installation, we'd like to thank all and congratulate all the graduating seniors, but just as well all our teachers and administrators for a great year in advance of our graduation here this week. Also, the Piney Valley Golf Course will reopen soon. I know those of you that don't know, we were hit pretty bad with the flood, but we plan to reopen on the 25th of May. And I bring this up because I have to tell you that Coach Rube Dow and the Waynesville High School golf team have been very instrumental in coming out the golf course on a lot of their volunteer time, off-duty time, and so forth to help us get that course back up on, back up on tap. So also, Fort Leonard Wood is going to sponsor an adult men's and women's recreational softball league again this summer. I'd invite those out in the community, school teachers I'm looking across again, but the softball league for men and women, it starts on the 31st of May with a coaches meeting on the 1st of June. So I would encourage those in the community that want to play recreational softball at the adult men and women level that they join in this. So that's all I had, sir.
Okay. Consent items. Mr. Berger? Oh, I'm sorry, district announcements. Dr. Henry?
Thank you, Mr. President. You cover injuries out there in Fort Leonard Wood, right?
Of course.
Yeah.
A lot of Bengay.
Well, first of all, I want to thank the middle school staff for being here. Thank you so very much. It's a, it's a great, they are our school of the evening and appreciate all they do. Having a daughter there, I can, I can tell you, we do as parents see all the great things going on at the middle school. So thank you very much for that. The timing of the recognition for Waynesville Middle School staff could not be more perfect. We held the ceremonial groundbreaking on Thursday evening with the choir and band performing. We are excited for this project to move forward, but we also apologize in advance for the inconvenience that construction of this magnitude will cause. I will assure you that when it's finished, it will be worth it, but it will be a little bit of a, of a change for us going around the middle school. Also wanted to mention that had an outstanding student presentation at the, the middle school Thursday night. Isabella Modio gave a, gave a speech and did a wonderful job writing that speech and delivering it. Great, great job and obviously reflects on, on her fine teachers and her fine parents. Graduation remains at 7:30 Friday, May 19th. That's this Friday at Tiger Stadium, weather permitting. If it's inclement weather, graduation will be moved inside. So we're all keeping our fingers crossed that there'll be no rain on Friday night. We will host our annual honors program on Tuesday where our class of 2017 seniors will receive an estimated $6 million in scholarship funds. We so appreciate our community's support of our graduating seniors. The last day of school for all students in grades kindergarten through 11th will be Friday, May 26th. It will be a half day of school. Desi did forgive our two days for flooding, so the last day will go back to May 26th. Summer school will be June 5th through June 30th. Summer sports camps are listed on the athletics website under important info and forms. That's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Henry. Item 6A, bid recommendations. Dr. Berger?
Yeah, fairly routine items. We did point out to, wanted to point out to the board that our relationship there with Specialty Air, kind of what we've been talking about in advisory and also be bringing to the board in the budget and in the fiscal year 18, entire budget proposal will be a movement to get away from those Webco units, which that contract is about $10,000 annual to have those maintained. Our folks just can't work on them. So another advantage of maybe looking at, you know, making a little stronger effort to move to a system that our folks can, but, but we certainly need it for this year. But other than that, all routine items.
Okay. Item 6B, financials. Dr. Berger?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. May 10th, 2017, with Missouri Securities and Investments Programs, $49,244,073.29. CDs with the Bank of Crocker, $10.5 million. The general account, $6,116,079.16,079.14. Payroll account, $88,429.79. The insurance account at zero for total funds, $65,948,582.22.
Thank you. Item 6C, study session minutes. Item 6D, regular Board of Education minutes. Item 6E, reorganization, regular board meetings. Item 6F, closed session minutes. And item 6G, closed session minutes. I need approval of the consent items. Have a motion? Mr. Anderson? Second. Mr. Schultz, all those in favor? Six oh Megan. Item, CTA spotlight. Mr. Beecham?
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. It is my privilege to introduce the board to Josh Mize, Waynesville Middle School CTA Spotlight on Education recipient, if you want to come on up here. Mr. Mize has worked for the middle school for nine years. He is a vital and contributing member of the eighth grade social studies department. This year, he has successfully integrated technology lessons into each standard and unit of study while taking on the arduous task of implementing layered curriculum within his class. He believes in making learning relevant and enjoys helping students discover the link from past experiences to their future endeavors. Aside from his first love, teaching, he is an awesome student government advisor. For five years, his SGA students have traveled to the Missouri Association of Student Council's State Convention and obtained honor council gold status the past three years for their dedication to school and community service, promotion of school spirit and positive climate, as well as support for the MASC Charity of Choice Special Olympics. They recently held the office of South Central District's second vice president, which is the only officer leader position within our district of student councils that can be held by a middle school. Under Mr. Mize, they have held this office four times. His leadership class has championed many wonderful causes, but are most remembered for their vital part. They play in Special Olympics each year in their Dude Be Nice campaign. His students look up to him and he has mentored over 250 students through the SGA program. As if those roles weren't enough, Mr. Mize coaches track for the middle school. He has covered, he has coached for four years. He says his favorite part of coaching is seeing student athletes achieve their goals that they've set at the start of their season and worked hard to obtain. Last year, Mr. Mize and his lovely wife welcomed Emmett Mize, their son, into the world. While Emmett has certainly heaped Josh and his wife on their toes, Mr. Mize hasn't missed a beat in his roles as a teacher, mentor, or coach. Now he just brings Emmett along for the ride. Congratulations, Mr. Mize, for his well-deserved award. You are a WMDS star. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Staff recognition, item 8A, Mrs. Bales?
Thank you. Project Teach is sponsored by Seller Sexton Auto Group. The Seller Sexton Auto Group will donate $100 stipend to Kelly Tillot from the high school to support expenses related to the project's materials and supplies. Ms. Tillot teaches social studies at the high school. Mike Freeman is here tonight to award Ms. Tillot the Fourth Quarter Project Teach Award.
What an honor it is again to be here with you all. And my goodness, fourth quarter has come and going and almost gone. So another school year by, gone past. And Ms. Kelly Tillot is your Fourth Quarter Teacher of the Quarter. And I'd like to kind of share with you about what Ms. Tillot's program was this past year. She, she teaches government and political science, I would assume? Am I pretty close?
AP Government.
AP Government. Part of it was missing there, but I, I kind of guessed there a little bit. I loved, I loved her program that she did this year. She did a political participation defined as why it matters. I like this. It's a project-based learning that has students research the current political participation rates, that's voter participation, in Pulaski County, and develop a solution for low turnover, low voting rates. Okay? Students will work with a team of peers to answer the following question. How can we increase the number of individuals participating in the political process in Pulaski County? I can answer that. Just put on a, an idea to raise your taxes and you will get some participation and a good one this time, I would say, though. Very, very good. So Ms. Tillot's program involved, you know, getting the students to identify and explain the role of the family and education and media in the process of how individuals learn about politics. She also explained how media affects public opinion, and they can. They also explained how Congress, the president, and courts, executive agencies respond to public opinion. They identified and described different ways citizens participate in the political life, as well as described the effect of the gender gap has on political participation. And we all know that is occurring. And also described the effects of education, social economic status, and race in regards to political participations. And from that, students will take on the role of a local citizen activist and design a program to increase voter registration and participation in elections and other political activities. At the end of the unit, the students will conduct exit polls at various Pulaski County election precincts on our National Election Day in November. And some of y'all may remember seeing the students out there. Sure, I sure do. This information will be compared to the state's Secretary of State's Office information in regards to voter turnout. And I hope that her process also does just that, increase voter turnout for our elections. Very, very important for us to be involved in that. And tonight, she is being recognized as your Fourth Quarter Teacher of the Quarter, Ms. Kelly Tillot. Give her a nice round of applause.
Thank you. It was an honor to do this with our kids. They really enjoyed it. They even had to seek out and do some PSAs in trying to get voter participation up. So it was an awesome activity and PBL that we did in class.
Mr. President, I'd like to just thank Mike Freeman and Seller Sexton for their support again this year. Your positive support of our school is much appreciated. And so thank you very much.
Honored to participate, and it's our teachers that make a gigantic difference with our students. Never forget that. Great job, Kelly, and all of our teachers.
Item 8B, Athletic Director of the Year, Mrs. Bales?
Thank you, Mr. President. It is my distinct pleasure to recognize Mr. Josh Scott for earning the MIAAA Athletic Director of the Year Award. Mr. Scott was presented with this honor at the conference banquet on April 9th at Tanterra Resort. We are extremely proud of Mr. Scott representing our district so well and his hard work that he puts forward with our athletic program here in Waynesville. So way to go, Mr. Scott. We're proud of you.
Do you want to say anything?
No, I'm kidding.
Okay, all right.
Josh, you sure you don't want to say something? All right. Item 8C, District Teacher of the Year, Dr. Atkins?
Thank you, Mr. President. It is my privilege to introduce our district teacher of the year, but before I do that, I want to talk a little bit about the process. This was a new process for us this year. The state of Missouri has a teacher of the year process and how they, they select throughout the state. So we had a team through our professional development committee that came together and came up with the guidelines for our own version of the competition through the, of the recognition process. And they came up with the guidelines and then we implemented those guidelines. We had a nomination period. Then we contacted individuals that were nominated and they did have an application packet, which was pretty rigorous. But we had the standards in there that would prepare our eventual winner to go on to the regional level competition through the Missouri State Teacher of the Year competition. There was also an interview portion, and so it was a very difficult decision. We did have outstanding candidates, but this was really a teacher-driven process in developing it and making the selection. So it is my honor to recognize our teacher of the year, Mrs. Keely Scott. She teaches advanced placement and dual credit courses in literature and competition at the high, composition at the high school. We had the opportunity to recognize her and let her know she had won earlier this year with her students. We surprised her with her certificate and with flowers. Dr. Henry and I went and did that. So it was really fun to have her students be part of that. She has been with us since 2011 and she's been a teacher since 2002. In addition to her activities here at the high school, she also participates nationally with College Board with being a scorer and a reader for advanced placement exams that students take. And then she's also now working with NIMSE, which is our National Math and Science Initiative grant at the high school. She's now working nationally with NIMSE on training teachers in the area of composition and literature. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Do you have anything you would like to add?
No, I guess I will say one thing. I recently, just last week, went to the, the next step beyond this, which is application for regional teacher. And a lot of the teachers there had not gone through any process whatsoever. They just got the call and showed up. So even though it was a lot of work, like she mentioned, the reflection and the work that I did just at the district level, I think that will help me. And even if I don't move on from there, the reflection involved in the writing of the essays and that kind of thing, I think, was worth my time. So thank you.
Thank you.
Discussion item 9A, embedded credits, Mrs. Breeden?
Hi, we are the Tiger Ice Career Embedded Internship Program. I'm Sierra Hart.
I'm Ashley Bartlett.
I'm Lindsay King.
I'm Tori Makin.
And I'm Ashton Pills. The course that we have taken this year has taught us about technology and marketing, and we've also got to experience a real work environment while we're in high school. And it also teaches us how to collaborate with kids that we normally wouldn't collaborate with. This is a picture of our first project that we did. It was a graphic design for Community Pride Night.
So how the class works is every day after fourth hour, we drive ourselves directly to the chamber and we arrive about 12:15 and we stay until 2:35, which is the regular school day. The school provided us with our own laptops and that's how we do the projects that Ms. Murray assigns to us. We do the projects individually or in a group depending on our strengths and weaknesses.
One of the first projects that we worked on was creating a class name and a class logo. Our class name is Tiger Ice, which stands for Interns for Career and Richmond. We also designed the logo on the screen, which is our class logo.
Community Pride Night was the first project assigned to us by Ms. Murray. It began with us creating concepts and ideas for logos. We presented the best of these to Ms. Murray and she chose the top three. The first one was used for the Community Pride Night event logo. Another was used for a social media logo and the other was used for the graphic design of the T-shirt. Afterwards, we created a promotional video for Community Pride Night and then at the actual event, a couple of us took photos and videos. And to finish it off, we created the thank you video for our volunteers and our sponsors.
The heart-shaped image on the screen is the social media logo. The center is the T-shirt design and the last one is the event logo.
One of the larger projects that we worked on was the Speak Your Peace Civility project, which urges the community to communicate in a more respectful way. We created a logo for this event. We also created Facebook covers and we also created images to go up each week on Facebook and we created a business card. We also created a civility project video to better explain to the community what the civility project is. And we made a community video project to show the community how they can get involved.
The image that you see on the top left was our first speaker piece logo. And after talking with Ms. Murray and consulting with the chamber board, they decided that we needed a few adjustments. So the one directly below it is the new and improved logo. The top middle is Be Responsible and that's an example of a Facebook banner. Be Bold to Search Yourself is an example of a monthly post and Care for Others on the right is an example of a Facebook poster.
The Shop Local promotional plan was the largest project that we had throughout the year. The Shop Local movement itself is aimed towards gaining consumers at local businesses within our community. After analyzing the previous year's promotional plan, we determined that one of the key factors in promoting Shop Local is the Shop Local discount tag, key tag, which allows you to get discounts at local businesses within our community. And we also decided that we wanted to incorporate infographics, as you see on the far side of the screen, as well as differentiate between shopping small and shopping at home.
So while we were updating the plan, Ms. Breeden brought in a few guest speakers. And one of those guest speakers talked to us about the difference between shopping small and shopping home. Shopping small, shopping with niche businesses, and shopping home is shopping with stores throughout your community. And that is one of the advertisements on the screen.
The process that we went through for Shop Local began with us analyzing and making suggestions of how to improve this year's Shop Local promotional plan. We visualized ads that we wanted to create, as well as brainstormed concepts for radio ads, and then typed the radio ads that we wanted to use and digitally created the ads that we wanted to incorporate. We also made 18 infographics and we took all these components and made a promotional plan for the year. After we made this plan, we submitted it to the media partners involved, the Shop Local, who reviewed it at a meeting, as you see on the picture in the middle. After this, after this meeting, we decided that changes we needed to make would result in 156 new and different sized ads, as well as 12 radio ads, which we helped in recording. And then we made our final revisions to send back for review. And on the far side of the screen with the pumpkin is an example of one of those many ads that we created.
The images on the screen now are just some of the examples of the different size advertisements we used in our Shop Local promotional plan and some of the different themes. We had six themes that we spaced over the 12 months.
We also had a few small video projects, one of which was the promotional video for Shop Small Saturday. We also remade the command orientation videos to show how the welcome bags get from the chamber to command orientation every Thursday. We also improved the chamber holiday video to make it a little bit more appealing to the audience. And we made a small business video to explain a small business workshop that you will hear about later in the presentation.
One of, one of our first projects was updating the Pulaski County area demographics profile. And we partnered with the Economic Development Team and Ms. Murray to create a prof, to create a program that explained wages per hour, tourism, traffic counts, and other statistics that are in the county. And then the end of the year trifold update explained what the chamber did this year and also what they're doing in 2017. And the creation of the end of the year update video went into more depth about what the trifold explained.
Another updating project we did was the directory for which we had to call the fingertip phone numbers to verify that they were working numbers. We also had to update some of the summaries in the front of the book and we created pages 35 and 91. Another project we did was the newcomers QR trifold ad, for which we called the existing ads to see if they wanted to keep their ad. And if they didn't want to keep their ad, then we had to call more businesses to see if they wanted an ad space. And if they did, we created ads like the one on the screen.
So the Community Leadership Awards Banquet, Ms. Murray wanted something a little bit different this year, something more likely Oscars. So I wasn't allowed to collaborate with my classmates because the Spraysville R6 School District actually got Organization of the Year. But I did get to collaborate with Mr. Wallace's WCC class and record the nominees, winners, and their bios. And that is the event logo.
Some small design projects we had was we created flyers for the high school to promote our class. We also made infographics to promote the use of social media in businesses. And we made the true color business cards, as you see on the screen.
Other small design projects that I worked on was the creation of the President's Club logo design, which is on the white background, as well as the Save the Date card for Taste of Pulaski County Ambassador Auction, which is on the black background.
We also worked on making a Committee of 50 logo. And we made a Committee of 50 infographic, which we, we don't have a picture of because we're still currently working on it.
Some individual video projects that we got assigned were creating the Taste of Pulaski County Ambassador Auction promotional video. And I paired with Ms. Murray and we created a video that was appealing to the community to come to one of the biggest chamber events of the year. We also did mascot videos and I had Tobias the Fearless Tiger and Handy the Helping Hedgehog. And Tobias was for the Community Pride Night and Handy was for the Volunteer Appreciation Week.
I created the Eggs and Issues promotional video. And Eggs and Issue is where our state representatives and state senator come down from Jefferson City to explain what's happened over the past session over lunch. And for my videos, I had Elizabeth Stripes, which is the chamber mascot, and I had LPC, which is Leonard Pulaski Clark, which is a leadership equal.
My mascot video was Kate and Ollie and they represented the Route 66 Challenge.
So I just currently finished working with Ms. Weathers on the membership renewal presentation. And I made a PowerPoint to show the community why they should be involved with the chamber. And we had interviews with current members. And my mascots were Harvey the Hungry Hippo for Taste of Pulaski County Ambassador Auction and Bargain Hunting Bernard for Shop Small.
The Civility Project informative video further explained the concepts covered in the Civility Project. The image on the screen is one of those used within the video. Each month is, has a theme that correlates to Speak Your Peace. And it is discussed in detail how to incorporate that into your daily life, as well as how to tie all the themes together to make a more civil and respectful community. My mascots included AC the Ambassador, who represents the ambassadors, and Pepper the Polar Dare, who represents the polar meltdown chili cook-off.
I also did a Volunteer Appreciation Week video and that consisted of thanking and showing off our five volunteer committees, such as the Board of Directors and Ambassador's Club.
We also worked on a few workshops, one of which was the Facebook Workshop. And that shows how businesses can use Facebook to their greatest advantage and also show ways that, how using their Facebook could harm their business. We also made a social media workshop, which, which shows how businesses can market their business without breaking the bank. And we also showed how they can use their social media to their greatest advantage.
So after the taste, Tori created a thank you video to our volunteers and our sponsors. And I created a recap video to show our community what this event is about to get more attendance for next year. And that is the flyer from this year's event. And the reason I joined this class is because this fall, I am going to be studying fashion merchandise and design. And so I really wanted the hands-on experience of business and marketing. And this class really offered that to me because I got to learn how to work with computer programs that I've never been able to use before. And I also learned how to take corrections from my peers.
I joined this class because I wanted to go into graphic design and I thought this would further my knowledge of graphic design a little more. However, through many of the projects that I worked on, I learned that I'd rather go into business and marketing instead. And I've learned a lot of leadership skills from this class. And I've also learned to work with people that I would not normally work with.
I joined this class because I felt like it was another great, unique opportunity that most schools don't have. And I've learned leadership skills and time management. And I've also learned that I want to, I've also learned that I want to be more involved in the community.
I joined this class because I was in a graphic design, a graphic design class. And I really enjoyed what I was doing, but I wanted to learn the business marketing side to graphic design. And I learned how to work through my social anxiety.
After hearing about this class, I joined because I believed it would give me the skillset that I would need when I pursued a career in animation, which it did. And from this class, I have not only learned how to lead and work with groups, which I was previously uncomfortable with, but also how to work with software that I did not think would be available to me during my high school career. So before we like, take questions, I'd like to thank not only our facilitator, Ms. Breeden, who has been a wonderful teacher this entire time for dealing with us as well as supporting us. I'd also like to give a thank you to Ms. Murray, who is the chamber director, as well as the chamber staff. They have been wonderful and supportive this entire journey that we've been through, the first year of this program. They've supported us all the way and helped us learn and grow together. And it's been a wonderful, memorable experience, as well as my peers, who without this class, it would not be possible to have as much experience, fun, and different perspectives as I've had throughout this year. So if there's any questions, we can take those now. So if there's any questions, we can take those now.
I, I would just like to echo what our fine young professionals said there. Thank you to Cecilia and the Chamber for opening your doors, and this was a, you know, it's always good when you come to somebody in the, you know, spring and say, hey, I got this weird idea, I'm not sure how it's gonna work. So here, would you do it? And, and, and she did an excellent job, as did Amy, and obviously, you know, the, the product's right here in front of you. So thank you very much, ladies. You did an excellent, excellent job.
Very impressive girls. Thanks, Ms. Breeden, Mrs. Breeden. Item nine B, school climate, Dr. Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. That's gonna be a tough act to follow.
Yes, it is.
But I'll try not to bore you too much. Tonight, on our perpetual calendar, we have school climate every other year, where we look at the various indicators that we use as a school district to, to see how we were doing with, with climate, and also working with our various stakeholder groups. So that, that's students, that's staff, and also community. So tonight, I'm gonna share with you the results. Some of these you've seen, some of them you might not have looked at thus far in the school year, but we've also developed some plans to address some of the things that we've seen from the data, and also celebrate some things that we've done very well throughout the year. I won't read every question to you, but this is staff survey questions from this year. As you can tell, two of the lower areas, we were sold about seventy-five to seventy, and seventy-seven percent a, as far as, as favorable ratings, really revolve around developing trust and providing avenues for the staff to provide input and decision-making. Positive, however, is, is very strong sense of safety. Certainly knew from our survey that adults care very much about their students. I think a theme that you'll, will see throughout this presentation is high expectations. Certainly that came through in every group that, that, that we talked to and looked at. We had high expectations. Strong understanding of the goals and direction of our building, and that's, that's an area that we're, we're really proud of also, because we've, we've tried to focus on our comprehensive school improvement plan, vision and mission, and, and really trying to be clear with the direction of our school district. So in our, our student questions, we, we have this broken down in early elementary, elementary, and then secondary. Now, the great thing is, is those, the number of question grows significantly throughout the years here. So our first group here, elementary student questions are fairly straightforward. This theme that you will definitely see throughout the student survey questions, my family likes to come to my school. And, and so certainly engagement is something that we want to continue to, to look at. The positives that we, we drew from the early elementary survey, high expectations again, also very pleased our, our young folks are in the Library Media Center collection, and then encouraging families to take part in activities at school. So as students grow, and, and as they go through the system, you know, perceptions change. You get a little bit older, third through fifth grade type students, and they see school a little bit differently, gets to the high school level, and, and that magnitude changes again. With our first set of elementary student questions, one area that, that we looked at here, in my school, students treat adults with respect. This theme came up really throughout the survey. Also, you see this, the same thing here. My teachers ask my family to come to school activities. So another area that, that very clearly we need to continue looking at. The second set of questions for our elementary students were pretty strong overall. So when we looked at key things to pull from, from the upper elementary students, high expectations again, Library Media Center, very strong. Technology was also listed as a strength. Opportunities for improvement, treating adults with respect, and providing opportunities for families to engage in school. So obviously, you can see from the, the student viewpoint, we need to continue to do things to pull our community into our schools. Now, middle and high school have a large battery of questions here, and, and they're not always as, as favorable a, as some of them, but I think very honest in, in the answers that they've given us. When you look at the first set, in my school, all students are treated with respect. So again, we see the theme of respect coming up, and then you see, again, here in my school, students treat adults with respect. So another issue we need to continue to address. With the second set of questions here, you look back, all of my teachers changed their teaching to meet my learning needs. I would have been interested, and in fact, need to pull some results from last year to look, because we've tried to, to place an emphasis on differentiated instruction at the secondary level this year. And that's, that's a new thing, you know, so we're, we're hoping to see some growth, but certainly addressing individual needs of students. And the third set of questions here, we had two areas in particular that pop out. In my school, students respect the property of others, so we go back to this respect theme that we're talking about. And in my school, students help each other even if they are not friends. So something that we've talked about quite a bit in our C-SIP discussions are relationships, respect, enriching, and appreciating the diversity of our school district, so we feel like we're getting some steps in place to, to assist with that. So several positives here, programming, assessment, technology, high expectations, challenging material, access to counseling, career planning, all things that our students said were very positive in the school district. And then opportunities for improvement, relationships, treating adults with respect, providing opportunities for families to engage in school, advisor-mentor relationships. This was one area that was very interesting, because, you know, students obviously would like to have one adult mentor, one adult advisor that they, that know them very well, and can advocate for them in, in the school. Flexible instructional methods, soliciting student input, climate of trust among students, cliquishness. And it's very interesting, because the data that, that I'm sharing with you here also backs up some of the comments that we had in our first diversity team meeting, the discussion of cliquishness amongst students at the secondary level, and what can we do to address that issue? So very, very interesting, very, very, you know, thoughtful comments certainly that came back. So overall themes, we feel very good about the fact that we are setting high expectations, and students feel like when they come here, that we, we do have high expectations for their learning. Our resources are very strong, and programming is very strong for our students. The three main areas out of all of this we've pulled is student and staff voice and involvement, treating adults with respect, and engaging our families are being things that we need to look at. How we're going to address these opportunities over, over the next year, and, and also through our C-SIP plan, will student-staff voice and involvement. The district diversity team addresses quite a bit of this, and pulling in students, teachers, community members to talk about various issues impacting our students. Place a greater emphasis, emphasis on soliciting input at the building steering team level. We've also talked as a district leadership team, the fact that teachers need to understand the process of being able to feed questions or concern through their building steering rep, and we have to also get information back to them in the process to make sure that communication loop is closed. Greater clarity and communication regarding the methods for involvement across the district, something that we need to continue to work on district-wide, again, the information from the district leadership team is coming through our steering teams, getting back to our folks. Treating adults with, with respect, we really think this respect theme goes beyond adults. Definitely were mentioned on two occasions, students, also at the secondary level. So leader in me is something that we're really excited about, and, and developing the young leaders who develop relationships more involved in their schools, we think can definitely play a role in this. One thing that we also want to make sure we emphasize is positive modeling among our faculty members. You know, we have to make sure that we are showing also that we treat each other with respect. We engage in collaboration, we engage in, in problem solving, in building relationships. You know, relationships, one of the, the foundations for student learning. And then engaging families, you know, we've, we've kicked around some ideas, we talked about this just briefly at our district leadership team meeting last week, but designing additional activities to provide students the opportunity to present their work for their parents, or for, you know, to their parents or for their parents. When they perform, when they have work there, we tend to see more parents show up. So we want to design more of these things where students are, are showing all the great things that they're doing in the school. Parent committees certainly are important. And we also talked about some of the events like carnivals, concerts, athletic events, things of that nature. We need to also showcase things that our students are doing. You know, why not at a football game have things outside in the forward behind the stadium with the great things kids are doing, that all these people are coming in, they can have an opportunity to look at the work that the students are, are doing. So we wanted to also utilize some of our more highly attended events to be a vehicle, vehicle for carrying out some communication on the great things students are doing. So at this time, I would be happy to answer any questions that you have in, in regard to our, our commentary on school climate.
Do we still have the welfare committees?
Yes, we do. Yes, we do. We still have welfare committees, and we have it processed district-wide where those can be fielded first, obviously, at the building level, because that's where the, usually the issue is most, you know, relevant for everyone. And then if it's not a building level issue, it comes to the district level, and we have a district-level team.
Any questions, any other questions?
Just like that quick comment up.
Yes, sir.
Last week, there was a team summit at the middle school, and it gave the kids opportunity to kind of voice concerns, and I thought it went very well, very well orchestrated, had a great panel, and the kids were able to voice their opinions and voice concerns, and I, I think they really enjoyed it.
Yes. Thank you for, for mentioning that, Mr. Quinn, and thank you to Ms. Sumter in her work for bringing that to our middle school. This has been a mostly a weekend event for our students, and this was actually done during the school day, day, to where more kids could take part in it, and appreciate Mr. Quinn was also involved in the panel. But I, I was able to come down for a short period of time and, and listen to the comments in those. We want to continue to see that spread out, to do more even at the high school level, and continue to do more at the middle school level. So thank you.
Any other questions, all right? Item nine C, proposed two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen Transportation Employee Handbook, first reading, Mrs. Bales.
Thank you, Mr. President. Attached to the proposed two thousand seventeen, eighteen Transportation Employee Handbook, presented to the Board of Education for first reading. Administration will ask for approval at the regular June meeting.
Okay, thank you. Item nine D, MSBA Board Policy Update, first reading, Dr. Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. You have a whole bunch of policies and procedural updates here, and nothing that has really come out of tabs. We did have a few questions we've cleared up on, on just some verbiage, but again, first reading now, and if you have any questions, feel free to, to let us know, and we'll address those.
All right, thank you. Action number, not, action item number ten A, Proposed FY eighteen Staffing Plan, Mrs. Bales.
Thank you, Mr. President. The FY eighteen Staffing Plan is presented as second reading for review and consideration. Since the first reading, the following revisions have been made, an addition of point five FTE Career Embedded High School, and addition of one FTE Special Education at the high school. The administration requests approval of the FY eighteen Staffing Plan as presented, please.
Are there any questions? I need a motion to approve that. Mr. Anderson makes a motion, any second. Mr. Keeling makes a second. All those in favor? Six oh, Megan. Item ten B, Proposed Course Description Book Changes for Waynesville High School and Waynesville Career Center, Dr. Atkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. Attached are recommended changes to the Waynesville High School Course Description Book, as well as the Waynesville Career Center Course Description Book. If these are approved, they will become effective for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school year. The administration recommends approval of Course Description Book changes as presented.
Any questions? Need a motion to approve that?
Motion.
Mr. Schultz makes a motion, I have a second. Mr. Anderson, second. All those in favor? Six oh, Megan. Item ten C, Surplus, Dr. Berger.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. The two thousand seventeen fiscal year seventeen surplus list, make note that we are again utilizing the government surplus auction. It will still be published locally, so everyone will still get, locally will get a chance to bid on those items. Kind of goes to a government surplus eBay, you might say, and we've had a lot of success with this. It's a little bit of a grind, because it's really regionally published, and folks don't always show up when they're supposed to, but, but has resulted in a little more revenue or a little higher bids. So, I'm sorry, motion to declare excess equipment, furniture as surplus property.
All right. Any questions, Andy?
Do we do this down at the old, what do we hold, the auction?
Well, the, the, the auction is electronic now, using the gov deals, it'll be published in the newspaper. And with everything we've got going on, Mr. Pritchard has all this stuff, and just about every nook and cranny we've got, but I think we have a lot at the warehouse, at central office, and probably PIC. Okay. And so it's, and it's all available for preview, so.
Any other questions? Need a motion to approve that? Mr. Keeling makes that motion, have a second?
Second.
Mr. Dearing, all those in favor? Six oh, Megan. Ten D, Student Handbook, second reading, Dr. Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. We are presenting the student handbooks for approval this evening with the updates as noted in your, your board docs.
Any questions? Have a motion?
Motion.
Ms. Schultz makes a motion, have a second? Mr. Anderson, all's in favor? Six oh, Megan. Item ten B E, Professional Learning Plan and Mentoring Protege Handbook, Dr. Atkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. The District Professional Development Handbook, as well as the new teacher, mentor, and protege handbooks, are presented for consideration and approval. Request a motion to approve them as presented.
Are there any questions? May I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
All right, Mr. Keeling makes a motion, may I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Schultz makes a second, all those in favor? Six oh, Megan. Ten F, FY eighteen Salary Recommendation, Dr. Berger.
Thank you, Mr. President. Gonna, we had a more expanded look at this in study sessions, we'll brief on it now, take any additional questions or follow-up. But to outline some of the budget concerns and unknowns that we have, we'll detail this out just a little bit in an upcoming slide, but our enrollment trends are still a concern. And what I've said is, we've put so much emphasis on the B two eligibility, and certainly that was a bigger issue, and, and a much bigger threat to the district in terms of fiscal threat. But enrollment trends still exist for this district. Enrollment trends drive funding, and that can be different. Districts that look like us, oftentimes suburban district, will, will generate a lot of revenue by local taxes, and that's just not the situation here. So enrollment trends are critical. Senate Bill five oh nine is scheduled to be triggered based on the revenues received by the state for this fiscal year. That will take effect next January, and will have an impact on next year's budget. So we'll hear a little more about that, but certainly, those were passed in two thousand fourteen. They had triggers on them of, I believe, one hundred and fifty million, and projected to hit those triggers. Prop C statewide sales tax, I mention that because that is a, a large amount of revenue for the district, and it's totally based on sales tax. So as the economy goes, sales tax typically goes. It's not as stable of a revenue as, as perhaps like current taxes with your local, your local tax rate versus assessed valuation. On the federal end, enrollment trends, again, because, again, the, the students drive the dollars here, and in fact, they drive the dollars in excess of what the state drives dollars for us in this very unique district. And sequestration funding caps are scheduled to return in FY eighteen, and when we say FY eighteen, we have to remember that the fiscal year for the feds is, is gonna start in October. So after the, you know, kind of after we get up and running and set our budget, we still have a lot of trepidation in the future, because we have to watch Congress and see what's gonna happen with not a budget, but likely a continuing resolution. And this is the, this is the big issue, so that's not a very sharp image, I, I know, but two thousand seventeen, right here, current year, wrapping up, we know that we're roughly, on average, month to month, about sixty students less. For every one of those students, it's gonna be for certain at minimum five thousand dollars on the state foundation formula, and if they're federally connected students, depending on how they're federally connected, but if they are a student that lives on post, that's another eight thousand dollars. So five thousand plus the eight thousand dollars. So it, those enrollment trends lowering can have an impact on the district in a hurry. So I've talked to the DLT team- So, I've talked to the DLT team in brief. They'll hear a little more about that when we start looking at the budget. Certainly, we've, you know, tried to get in the board's ear and remind you that we've got this B2 thing, we believe, beat for the local effort, but we need to see a buck in this trend. We don't need to necessarily see a spike in ADA, but certainly we've got to, we've got to slow it down. And we don't control that much, unfortunately. Our salary history this year or for previous years going back to 2012, you can see, I think, two and a half percent and a range of two and a half percent to 1%. For 17, I'll be recommending a percent, which of course with the step, this represents the increase, this represents the step. And just to move our salary schedule on a $75 million budget, it, it's $637,000 just to move it horizontally and vertically. Our benefit increase, which will be the topic of my next presentation here, is $250,000. I'll expand on that in just a moment. Additional cost, $400,000. So, you're looking at 1.3 million dollars just to move the salary schedule, absorb the benefit increase. That's health insurance, vision, dental, gap, AD&amp;D. That total cost is about 1.3, 1.3 million dollars. And then also in study session, we would have $200,000 down here in market value increases that we expanded on in study session. So, as you can see, my salary recommendation, this will go into effect for FY18 next fiscal year, step and 1% increase to the base, fully support SOS, which that's becoming less and less, has ever since career, career ladder was lost and not funded by the state, but we continue to fully support SOS and get a good bang for our buck in that, and the market value increases. Entertain any questions.
On SOS, what do we still pay, what do we pay our teachers?
I have to defer to Ms. Bales or one of my other teammates who works with that more directly. We all work with it. Ms. Bales, can you kind of?
I'm not going to misspeak here, Mr. Anderson. I don't know offhand. We pay a certain amount for students that can, or for students, for teachers that complete 25 hours and then those that do 50 hours. And so, we have two tiers. What the exact amount is, I cannot answer that, sir.
We can certainly send out a memo. I'll, I'll make sure we do. I can tell you more about the old career ladder program because I was in districts that had that and it topped out at $5,000. But I'm going to look at some of my more experienced teachers and I'm not, yes, I'm seeing an assuring nod or three. So, it topped out at $5,000. I do not believe our SOS replaced that as fully, but I, I don't want to speak to it very much here either.
I'm looking it up right now and I'll have an answer for you before the end of.
I mean, they, basically they can earn both if you 25 or 50 hours.
That's right. Out, outside of contract time. That's correct. State used to pay that 80% reimbursement on that, then they dropped it down and I should be looking at Mr. Blythe over here. Then I dropped, think they dropped it down to 60%. And then in the 2006 formula change, they dropped it altogether. So, they do not fund any of it.
Any other questions? All right, we have a motion to approve step, 1% increase to base for both certified and classified salary schedule, fully fund SOS and market value increase. Need a motion for that? Mr. Anderson makes a motion, may I have a second? Mr. Quinn, second it? All's in favor? Six O, Megan. Item 10G, health benefits, Dr. Berger.
Yes, I think I've got a PowerPoint, or yeah, thank you. Okay, talk about this just a little bit. Want to, want to speak about the Missouri Educators Trust. So, when we formed that, I believe it was about 40 school districts. We were in a charter member, I guess you'd say. I'm seated on the board. We've had great success with Missouri United School Insurance Council, and that ensures our liability insurance, our property insurance. And the Met was, was modeled after that. Kind of a brief history, history lesson to that is prior to 2014, the school district, we saw in 13 a 16% increase in insurance rates. In 14, when we say double-digit increases, in 14, we were confronted with a 26% increase in rates. The Met has grown to now 80 school districts, and it's just a self-insured insurance pool. Okay? So, we're going to pay in our premiums, we're going to pull those, and then we're going to pay claims out of that. We're going to go over here and, and bid out a catastrophic insurance policy. So, if anything huge comes about, the insurance will pick that up. But we're going to maintain and our pooling point on the catastrophic, if memory serves, is about a quarter of a million dollars. I think we lowered it $50,000 this last year, but 200,000 to 250,000. But if the, if the issues don't get to that level, we pay that out of that pool. So, we are the insurance company. And now that's really helped us coming into this year because we were confronted with a 9% increase this year. So, what the Met did was we, we looked at our, our reserves and we offset 3% of those. So, we are going to be, realize a 6% increase, but of course, we fared much better than that because we had a single-digit increase, we had a pass, which means no increase, and then one year, we had a $755,000 reduction in our premium cost and the same insurance plan. So, overall, we fared much better, but even the 80 school districts on average have, have realized a 2% increase each year, just 2%. So, it's been a, overall a success. It's just that I've been very excited to bring you better news and talking about a pass or reduction, but I always kind of qualified with that with, I won't be able to always bring you that good of information, good of news. If we'd have come out of this 26% increase with a 6% increase, we'd have thought that was a win. That cost is going to, the cost of that is $250,000. So, the size of our district, that's not, you know, a cost that we can't swallow, but it's not as good a news as we've had in the previous. So, right here, this is the current rate, $450 per month. This is all district-sponsored. Well, everything we're talking about is district, district-sponsored. It's increased, you see this $27 here. Then we jump over, the district offers a board-paid dental insurance, and you'll see the cost increased. Down here at vision, this is just the buy-up plan. Down here at vision, it actually went down, but unfortunately, it's the cheapest plan, you know, the vision plan. So, not much savings there, but we'll take it wherever we can get it. And then you jump over here to the AD&amp;D, stayed the same, and the gap plan stayed the same. This gap plan, we're, we're taking a pretty hard look at. We actually worked with CTA a little bit on this. Got some good information from the survey this year. We will survey, try to be more specific in our survey, but the gap plan is being just grossly underutilized. We're paying out of a premium, this is board cost, of about a, over $100,000. I think the number was like $127,000, while our employees are only recouping about $30,000. So, that's not a very good return on investment or, and there's a couple of things. You know, the gap plan just isn't fully understood by our staff, so we've asked American Fidelity to make sure they get in our staff's ear and, 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 and explain, explain it better. But I can tell you even from myself, I have had allowable claims that I haven't turned in. It's just cumbersome, there's not a lot of return. So, that's one benefit that's been with the district for quite a while. And what, basically what we're wanting to ask our staff is, do you want that somewhere else? That's not, that's not part of any proposal this year, but kind of planting the seed for what might come around in FY18. If we see utilization go up and, and our staff says, oh, we like that, then of course, you know, we'll guard it a little, we'll, we'll hold it up a little higher. But right now, you know, we're, we're not really pleased with that product. But overall, our employee benefit informa, our employee benefit plan is very competitive. So, benefit recommendation is Plan 8 at the $477,000. Brief description, description of the deductible, out-of-network, RX card, of course. BPJ plan, vision plan, life had no chain in the gap plan. I'll entertain any questions the board might have.
So, it's going to go up basically $31 a month?
Total, yep, for all benefits, yep.
Deductibles are basically the same?
Yes, they stayed exactly the same. There was no eroding of the plan, which is a positive. I appreciate you pointing that out, but, but it also didn't, it didn't, you know, get any better this year either. Same plan as offered last year across the board.
Any discussion?
Okay, Mr. Anderson, I have the answer to your question regarding SOS. Teachers receive $750 for 25 hours and $1,500 for 50 hours.
So, a total of 25?
They receive one or the other. They can sign up to do the 25 hours or the 50 hours.
They can't, it's not both, it's not a, okay.
No. Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Bales.
Any questions on?
Thank you.
All right. Motion to approve district-sponsored benefit package. Mr. Anderson made the motion, may I have a second? Mr. Dearing, second. All those in favor? Six O, Megan. Item 10H, OPA food service management, Dr. Renewal, Dr. Berger.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I'm going to stay here and hold the stage because now we are going to get some good news. So, while no partnership is probably perfect, OPA was put in this year and, you know, we've given the board updates throughout and not perfect, always room for improvement here and there, but overall, I would say this partnership has went about as smooth as, as we could have anticipated. And so, we charged OPA with, with several things. The expectations were high. They kept telling us they could deliver. And tonight, we'll hear about the fiscal element of that. And we'll bring up Mark Blythe and he'll take the stage, but I wanted some credit of it, so I'm trying to hold it here because there is, there is some good news with, with what Mark's going to present. So, thank you, Mark. Yes, that's right. I've got all three documents here in the board docs. So, participation, that one is pretty complex, but.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. It seems like it's almost impossible to believe that we, 11 months ago, we were standing here telling you on the virtues of OPA, and we're very pleased that you, we did get to partner with you. It has been a very successful year. The first document that I want to visit with you about is that graph. On the left-hand side, that represents your participation for the 15, 16 school year. As you go across, it's monthly with a total at the end, and that is just through March. You see that there was 132 additional lunches per day and 60, 60 of those were in students. So, I guess with the drop in enrollment, that, that is a pretty good improvement with 60 student, lunches a day improvement. 73 additional adults are eating lunch with us on a daily basis. Breakfast is a 78, or I'm sorry, 79 students increase over what we, what you were doing before. And the à la carte has gone from $289 a day to 653, which is $364 increase per day on the à la carte. So, it has been a very successful program. Karen and Shannon have done a very good job along with your staff of trying to meet all of your needs. The other goal that we had was to make you a little bit more financially stable. I believe we've accomplished that. I hope that some of the, some of what we've been able to save you is what Dr. Berger was talking about, being able to pass on to your staff. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
I'd just add that the historically, and I apologize if I beat anybody the punch, Schultz, did you have a question there before I jumped up? Okay, sorry. So, yeah, my prayer for revision. The, you know, the district historically was on a trend, well, we were running the food service at about a million dollars in the red. And so, we charged OPA, I remember talking to Mark and some of his colleagues about maybe making a $300,000 dent in this in three years because we wanted to do it with, with our staffs, be very sensitive to our staff and, and not, we certainly have high expectations, but not unreasonable demands. So, in a single year, we've actually, by increasing the revenue and decreasing the expenditure and Mark, what Mark's talking about with increased participation, that increases revenue. And we've closed that gap to, what's the magic number?
Well, based on the projections, we're looking at about, I didn't know you wanted me to be specific.
I'm sorry. Let me beat you the punch. About $50,000. And reason why Mark's being a little hesitant maybe is there's a little unknown there because we're not completely full with, done with the year. And so, it's, it's just been, that's just incredible, you know? We've been extremely pleased with that, so. I didn't mean to take words out of your mouth, but that's pretty positive, and I wanted to share that too, so.
Are there any other questions?
Any questions? Andy?
How many district staff do we have in food service and how many OPA employees do we have?
How many we transition over if Karen would, might have a ballpark number? And how many would that leave for district, on the district side? Just ballpark it, yeah. Of course, we've had some retirements this year and, and so that'll, that'll continue to evolve, and it's a good number. I'll try to make a note to make sure and provide that number in our, in any upcoming report too, because that's a good number for the board to have a, have a handle on.
It should be included in our staffing plan except for hourly.
Good. And, and can be found in the staffing plan too. Yeah, that's right, Ms. Bales, thank you.
If not, I'd take a motion to approve first-year renewal of the OPA food service management. Mr. Keeling made the motion, may I have a second? Ms. Schultz seconded it, all in favor? Six O, Megan. We have a need to go into closed session, closed record, closed vote allowed by RSMO 610.021, Section 3, hiring, firing, and discipling or promotion of employees. In section 13, individual personnel records, performance ratings. I need a motion to enter into closed session.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Keeling makes a motion. Mr. Quinn, second it. Roll call vote?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes. Six O, Megan. We're adjourned and we're going into closed session.